You're gonna get into our city council meeting here. Right now.
All right, good evening, Councilor, City Councilors, um, nice to see you this evening. So I just have just a couple, um, brief updates for you. And we'll get right to the first one here. In the, uh, our beloved art deco, historic art deco building, the Martin Luther King Junior Library is, um, undergoing a major renovation. So, um, as you are well aware, since, uh, we have to, uh, we forward unless we have the support of the council, including the budget that often goes with the projects that were, we proposed. Um, I just wanted to provide you an update that in about six to eight weeks, you'll, you'll have a contract confirmed on you. And that will be to do substantial repairs of an outdated energy systems and heating and especially heating and cooling and ventilation. And so, um, there's a, there's a lot of detail, uh, that'll be involved with this, including, uh, some redesign. But when we're finished, we'll have a beautifully restored main floor and a, a basement that can be used for meeting rooms and just community, uh, community gatherings.
An opportunity to display art to honor, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior.
Uh, let's get started with that conversation right now, starting right here and now, uh, Councilor Chamberlain. Um, I, I think if that's a wonderful idea. And we can either, we can either work through our arts commission, uh, or if and we probably have a representative that can relay that back, or we can work through the, the library. I, I would hope that anybody that has an idea about displaying art would feel welcome to just present their art to us and or present an idea to commission an artist. And so more to come on than that. And we'll, uh, we'll work through that in the budget to see if this is what, what you're looking for. Uh, it'd be tough though, I probably would ask the art commission.
Absolutely.
Yeah, to, uh, go through a bunch of recommendations and ideas and on behalf of all of us, just make a, a separate and independent, um, decision on how to spend, uh, government dollars, that's the way we go.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, thank you for that. I mean, I appreciate bringing that up.
Roosevelt Smith on the Arts Commission would be a really great person to start with on that conversation. I know he's, he's already started that conversation too. So thank you for your answer. I really appreciate it. That's it. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Super.
Councilmember Mochler.
Thanks, President Goodell. This is just, uh, congratulations that I'm really looking forward to these improvements to a truly beautiful building. I, um, was wondering if, if you or Public Works were aware of the huge sound of energy incentive grants for retrofits on your commercial facility, energy efficient, renewable sources, et cetera. I only know about these because I got lost looking for Manchester State Park. Um, and noticed that the Manchester Library had received of grants for solar panels on their roof. So I'm just asking about that.
I wouldn't. If you would send that to us, Councilor Mochler, the information you have, we will certainly take it under consideration.
I look forward to that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mayor Wheeler. Next, we have a consent agenda.
Thank you, President Goodell. Uh, for approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A claims and check register, one, check numbers three nine nine zero nine eight through three nine nine three two one, and electronic fund transfers, V three five six one two through V three five six eight zero, and the grand total amount of three million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the amount of one million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Three, regular payroll for payout for pay period ending July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the amount of three thousand, thirty-seven dollars and sixty. Four, retiree payroll for pay period ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and eight cents. B, minutes of meeting July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. C, minutes of study session July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. D, confirm reappointment of Beverly Kincaid to the Civil Service Commission. E, lease agreement between Kitsap County and City of Bremerton for the use of BCAT facilities. F, set annual compensation for the Bremerton Municipal Court Judge effective July first, twenty twenty-two. G, inter-agency agreements with Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts for therapeutic court. H, professional services agreement with KPG Somas Inc. for the West Kitsap Way Transportation Planning Study. And I supplemental agreement number four with Skilling's Inc. for the design of the Washington and Eleventh Street Roundabout Project. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Um, does any member of the public wish to comment on any one of these items? Seeing none, we will go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Sorry, Quinn.
Uh, and.
Go ahead, Councilor Mochler. You're doing great.
So, uh, you finish the motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chamberlain? Oops, sorry.
The motion is second. I call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yeah.
Dennehy?
Yeah.
Mochler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Goodell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public recognition.
All right, um, as noted on the agenda, public recognition provides opportunity for attendees to address the council on any city-related item. It is already listed on tonight's agenda. Please raise your hand to be recognized. We only ask that you state your name for use of the record and leave your comments, uh, to three minutes or less. Uh, timer system will be used, so everyone is treated equally and fairly. Um, with that, I open, uh, public recognition. Hey, IT, you've, um, done something. I guess it's fine. I guess the, is it supposed to be showing the timer? All right. We're gonna recognize, uh, Joe Walter.
It'll show the timer when somebody starts talking.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Joe Walter here, um, and I'm back to talk about the Martin Luther King Junior block. Um, I think there are other voices who you've heard talk about the toilet and trash problem on that block. Um, I've spoken to some of you about toilets, um, but it seems that the conversations just go right to the obstacles. We, we know what the obstacles are, but still we have a responsibility to the health and safety, if not just the people who are, um, living behind Sally's, but to the people passing through that neighborhood. Um, there's health and safety issues for the entire community, um, that needs to be addressed. And it is our responsibility to overcome the obstacles. Um, the last time I spoke to the mayor about it, um, I went away saying that I personally was gonna go and research how these obstacles have been overcome in other communities, wishing to be helpful, but I spoke too soon. It's just one project too many for me as a community volunteer. Um, COVID closed my business and what I'm doing to pay my mortgage now, it's a lot more time consuming than my previous work. There's my elderly mom and my disabled daughter who need my time. And it strikes me that it should not be the responsibility of already time-challenged community volunteers to come up with answers to problems that need, uh, a solution found in our community. Um, we started and we're in the middle of organizing a solution-focused meeting with stakeholders. Uh, whatever stakeholders means, people who need toilets, people who enforce toilet rules, people who want to serve others in our community. Um, but I'm tired of, you know, like pulling, the work of pulling together folks who want to have a meeting about finding solutions. Um, can you put some staff on this? Can you affirm that this is a problem that you are responsible for and that you're, you're working on? Folks will help and there are ideas, there are solutions. But right now it feels like it's just about political will. Um, and the trash thing, I know you know that there was a crew of volunteers on MLK on Saturday doing a community give back, mostly about food poisoning. Um, but while we were there, we found ourselves picking up a truckload overflowing with trash that would not fit in the dumpster. It, it's wonderful to supply a dumpster, but not if you don't haul it away. And it, it's a bad look to have our community's teenage leaders bagging trash that the city hasn't called away. I, I, I look forward to working more on this with you and just reminding you that it is your work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Marlon Cameron.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Council. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Uh, Al would like to talk about, uh, MLK. As Joe shared, uh, we were down there on Saturday, uh, cleaning up around the dumpster. Apparently Waste Management will dump the dumpster, but will not dump, uh, the garbage that is around, uh, the dumpster. And as she said, it was a truckload of garbage. So it'd be nice to know, uh, when that trash is dumped and can it be emptied more frequently? In regards to the bathrooms, uh, you know, I've been covering these city council meetings for the last month or so, but I haven't heard much discussion on solutions, uh, for downtown, even if they're temporary. Uh, looking at the cost of one or two porta potties and, you know, an extra, uh, cleaning, uh, might run anywhere between fourteen thousand and twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, for a year. Uh, and to me, this seems like a good use of money. As many down there do not want those that are homeless, uh, to use their restrooms, and so they're not welcome there. Today, there was a gentleman who was incontinent and had to sit in his own feces and wait for an ambulance, uh, to come, which took, um, a, a long time for that to happen. So I'm not sure what we are doing, uh, with our citizens and our neighbors downtown. Uh, but these things need to be addressed, especially when we hear things of, you know, this golf course is getting funding and this park is getting funding. Uh, the mayor, you expressed earlier, uh, about how this park, you know, those folks deserve a bathroom. Uh, and while I agree with that, the folks that are down on MLK also need a bathroom. Uh, so this doesn't seem like a heavy lift. As you know, there are many of us in the community that have organizations or are part of organizations that are willing to come alongside and support through volunteer, as we were again, uh, picking up trash and passing out water during the, uh, the heat wave. And, uh, we continue to stand ready to be a partner, uh, with the city, uh, to serve these folks. Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you. Jack Campbell?
Thanks. Um, yeah, unfortunately that trash can that they were talking about was, is, has now been taken away completely again. Um, and I, I just wanted to add to that, that, um, it's, it was a team of, of unhoused, my unhoused neighbors down there that have spent weeks organizing to pick up the trash because they think, you know, the people say we don't pick up our trash. And so they've all been pitching in everything they can to pick up the trash there. Um, and then, then they, you know, they pile it up and, and nobody else. So anyways, just thank God. Thank you for the community members for hauling away that garbage. But I, I agree with, uh, you know, the first caller that it's, it's the city's responsibility and it's something we can do. And providing toilets and, and trash is, is a basic community service, I think. Um, you know, maybe you could just have the, the Parks Department extend, extend their area to include that area. You know, um, I don't know, but thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next is Jordan. If you could state your name for the record.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hey, sorry about that. Uh, my name is Jordan Keller and, uh, thank you all for having us. Good evening to you. You can still hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
You're, you're usually just, look, I'm, I kind of, kind of wait for responses sometimes, um. So I guess I'll just start raving and sort of. Um, I'm inspired by what they've said before me about addressing the homelessness situation and, and the behaviors that occur around that. And I think, uh, it, it would be easy to, um, see why investing in at least the small things of, uh, maybe getting a, a job and getting somebody paid to clean up that area. Things like that, so you're getting dual, you know, two birds sort of thing. Um, real quickly though, as for, uh, the behaviors and the reason we, you know, that we have a trash line up and you know, sometimes it's dangerous because there might be the drug, um, you know, paraphernalia and stuff. So, um, in order to reduce those behaviors, we need to approach with, um, showing them that we're gonna be there. I mean, a toilet for sure. We should, we should set up a, where this group, you and us, we begin exchanging emails as well. And about, um, how we can, guess, you know, out of pocket or out of volunteer, a more official volunteer between us. Because we need to show them, and look, these people are exhausted. They're doing it. You know, you think, you see, you see it all the time, you hear them. Um, we at least need to coordinate together to reduce this, uh, kind of thankless or rewardless, uh, volunteer work that's draining them. So let's get some emails going or, uh, something like that to coordinate on at least a toilet because it's just little, little gestures of empathy. I sat with a gentleman in there who had beautiful art and I, I should share it next time. And he cried just because we were grateful to see his art. So if you give just a little bit of kindness, it would be such a huge investment. Such a huge investment in, in behavior, see, because he, I guarantee you was much less likely to need to abuse drugs or anything like that after that. Huge, if you want to get scientific about a dose of morphine, right? We, it's small, the toilet and stuff. My God, it's so small. And we can talk about how we can help with that. But that would be a huge gesture. I guarantee some of them would cry knowing that you guys are listening.
Okay, uh, uh, thank you, Jordan.
And they will, thank you last, last, thank you so much for having us, the public meeting, because it's so vital that people have communication with, uh, their leaders. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, I am not seeing anyone else for public recognition. So with that, I am going to, uh, close public, as you may, I'm gonna close, uh, public recognition. Um, and actually, a lot of what we just heard, uh, Mayor Wheeler and I spoke about just yesterday. Um, and there are, it, it, I will say it's not as quite as simple. And there are some issues and we've got to figure out a way to navigate those. With that, I will, uh, turn it over to Mayor Wheeler.
Oh, thank you, Council President. And I thought it was important for anybody in the viewing audience to know that the city, the City of Bremerton is dedicated to full-time FTEs to patrol the entire downtown area twice a day, uh, to pick up all trash in public areas and to notify trash on, that is in private property, that it's a violation of our codes and they've got to clean it up. And so, you know, it's, we're on it together. Um, we, we have dedicated that Monday through Friday. And so, um, I, I thought it was important to at least share that. Um, the council, I'll be coming to you again to secure some funding for the Stand By Me program, support security at the Salvation Army. And the Stand By Me is a private, is a nonprofit, is community health services, is the, is the main sponsor of this program. It, it helps people who are trying to work their way out of mental, you know, mental health issues, addiction and other issues that are associated. Uh, all the way to housing and even up to, um, being productive again as far as a job. And so what that does, what that allows us to do is also, as we have bathroom, with that, the bathroom is available, a, a clean, functioning bathroom that is, that is monitored along with a hygiene center. And of course, folks, if they need, uh, the shelter is there. So this is low barrier, um, very low, all of it's low barrier. So not a lot of restrictions, other than you, you have to, you know, you can't commit a felony. You, you have to, um, get into drugs and there are certain things to maintain that privilege, low barrier. So, um, I'll have, I'm happy to share with you my experiences with, with the private owners to try to do, to try to do these, um, portable uh, uh, outhouses and what happened with that experiment. Um, to any one of you who wants to meet, discuss that. And, um, and so, um, we will keep working to ensure that we have a low barrier access to a bathroom. And of course, the parks, um, we, we talk about parks and finally getting one, a decent one at Lulu Haven. That just means that they're now out there with Kulanis Park, Evergreen Park, Blueberry Park and other parks in our area. Uh, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Vice President Chamberlain.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for the update. I would love to meet with you to discuss, um, the data surrounding, um, you know, uh, portable restrooms and also to find out the status about, um, I believe the Mission Gals, oh, had a couple of, uh, portable shower units or maybe I'm, maybe that's outdated information, but they're not being used right now. But I, I would love to set the time to, to meet with you, discuss that. I think the real key time for bathrooms aren't accessible, the middle of the night. And having cleaned up alleys with needles and poop myself and having worked at the actual low barrier shelter. It's, it is a vital need for our community. Thank you so much for the work you're doing.
What I could possibly do, and just so we don't leave the public hanging, hanging while we're all having these private conversations, I can share with you, as, as a Salvation Army board member, we offer, uh, portable bathrooms outside in the parking lot. Before, we had a full-time establishment. And we did that as, as the Salvation Army's, you know, priority to do is to be humane to, uh, for the folks who didn't have shelter. And so the experiences we've had were, were many and they weren't good. The bathrooms were vandalized. Um, they required twenty-four-hour day, um, monitoring. There was, there was drug, uh, use, drug abuse. There was other, believe it or not, sometimes people would lock themselves in for the night. Um, when they were required to be serviced once a week, um, they weren't in good shape. The companies do need to have a bathroom returned to them so they can clean it and return it back out to another group so they can make money. These bathrooms were not serviceable in some cases. Sometimes it could be mess. Um, so needles being dumped into, um, mass, you know, multiple and large amounts of needles being dumped into the, the bottom of the bathroom, into the outhouse, um, processing those out became problematic. And so these are, these are just workers trying to go get a bathroom and take it back so they can clean it, to get a new one and service. It, it didn't, it didn't fit a business model. So what, what you're proposing now is, and, and then again, um, we're proposing that somehow this would have to be either a private or a government-led operation um, to monitor a twenty-four seven, uh, uh, monitor behaviors, monitor the whole thing in an area that I'm not sure. So all of these things, what I'm trying to say is, is, um, fortunately, we have a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week low-barrier shelter with minimum requirements to maintain access. Um, requirements that I believe we would probably have the same standard for. You wouldn't be able to use our bathrooms, government bathrooms for drugs. Uh, like to be, um, banned, you couldn't vandalize them. And it would be the same standards we would require as a city government. And plus, I don't know who we get to do that, uh, right now. And I see we, we got.
Man, just follow up. I apologize. I just had just, um, well, what I know about the, um, Salvation Army is that they do lock their doors at nine. So they're not, they are, they are a shelter that is, um, uh, and I believe near capacity, although it's summertime, so maybe they're not at capacity now.
They're not at capacity.
Um, they're not at capacity now?
No, they're not.
And so it is a twenty-four seven, however, they don't offer showers to everybody that comes in. And the bathrooms aren't accessible if you're outside, only if you're inside. But I, I, I definitely respect the barriers that you're talking about. And it is a, a, a large problem to work through. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to answer real quick, the condition for having a bathroom after seven PM and, and, and having one until seven AM the next morning is you do have to go into the shelter, um, to, you know, rather than sleeping out, um, type. And then the, the same, uh, same barriers are required, same low barrier, uh, rules, you know, are, and, you know, they're still the same.
Right. Uh, thank you, Vice President, the mayor, uh, Councilmember Mochler.
Well, thank you, Council President. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, recognize this is in my district. I've talked to a lot of, um, folks down there, individuals and business owners, um, you know, definitely aware of these issues. And I thank the members who spoke up tonight and for the help they're, uh, they're doing in the community. Um, and yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to be a part of that conversation, um, with that in my district and, um, look how I can contribute. So thank you for, uh, walking us through some options.
Yeah, I, I, I would be happy to attend that also, so maybe we could set something up. But I, it, not to overwhelm me or anything, uh, but I really see where we can come up with it for ideas and solutions. All right, Anna, uh, or sorry, Councilmember Mochler, lose track of what we did.
Not to worry. Um, I too would like to be part of that conversation. Um, I found easy to forget how a person can become a, a non-person to so many. And, yeah. So I would definitely like to be a part of that. I think that showing respect to the, to the people who are living along MLK would be a good thing. I'd like to be part of that conversation. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Frum.
I know you're disappointed that I raised my hand. Um, you know, I know, but I have to say it. Uh, I think we can all agree, um, we hope that we don't ever have to say, you know, believe it or not, people lock themselves in these porta potties to spend the night. You know, that, that is such a sad reality. But one that we really shouldn't wonder why, you know, uh, it's desperate. You know, uh, it's desperation. Uh, so we've got huge problems, obviously we do. Uh, it sounds like study session material or whatever. I always go to community partners, not just Salvation Army, can get, you know, uh, A R C, you know, help at all. Um, so, you know, what do we do? What are, uh, I, I, I agree, we've got to find a solution. It can't just be, well, when they did this, it was terrible what we found, and, um, we've got to find a solution. Um, because, uh, because people are, you know, happen to sleep in bathrooms, it's not, um, a reason why not to do it.
Yeah. No, absolutely.
Thanks, thank you.
And I'll, I'll just close by saying, I, we, if we were to offer, and you've done a, council, you've done a wonderful job. I don't know of any other councils that have supported the, the funding that requires the partnerships that we've entered into. I mean, with KCR, the Salvation Army, Community Health Services, Kids' Mental Health, Impermanent Housing Authority. There, I don't know of another city that has done what we've done. And, and it's a, it's a tremendous amount of work and resources. And the churches around here stepping up, there is an unbelievable amount of, of human capital invested in to support our most vulnerable. At the end of the day, we cannot make somebody against their will, um, access these services. Can't do that, we, there's no, there's not a law, and I, I don't even know what a law would look like, and, you know, and that's way beyond my pay grade and what I do. Um, all I can do is continue to offer more resources, working with you, and make them as available as possible, all the way to multiplying our navigator programs when we meet people and they're in crisis. We're adding the, the, um, mobile opioid addiction and mental health primary care treatment clinic, the mobile clinic. And our first responder fire departments interact with folks who could use these services. It, helping them right as they're in their lowest point, if they're going to the emergency room or jail. And so, we've done, we're doing that, we're done, we've done that, we're doing it, we are there every day doing this. And so, if you have, um, other ideas and solutions, and you want to ta-talk about this in a roundtable forum, how we can expand the programs, because we have capacity, all the programs are just defined. They have capacity, they can take on more clients, more people. Okay, so, um, when we talk about what we, more we can do, um, look at what we're doing, and then we have to ask ourselves, are we successful? Are we reaching all these people, and you have to ask yourself why? We have to ask ourselves that. I'll just, I'll leave it at that. For council.
Good, thank you. Yeah, we have to, uh, so, um, I'll put it in his interest, I don't think there's a single person on, uh, council who doesn't want us to come up with a solution, but it has to be a workable solution. Um, I'll, maybe, uh, Vice President General and I can have a little conversation, because we run the risk now, forum, and should this go to, uh, public safety, or where should this be of, of, you know, some time up, upcoming? So, we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out and figure out how it fits. Um, again, our role is to fund things or to make legislation. Um, and so, this might be just some creative brainstorming, uh, with the mayor, to see if we can, maybe we have some ideas, um, that, um, could, um, help with some of the, the, the obstacles of providing, um, some of this, and I have some in my head already. So, in that vein, he said, we are going to move on to general business.
Thank you. General Business Item Five A, Public Works Agreement with Sound Pacific Construction LLC for the East Eleventh Street and Perry Avenue Reconstruction Project. Um, presenting tonight is Engineering Project Manager, Vicki Grover.
Good evening, everyone, council members, members of the public. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to share my screen, I'm going to do a brief presentation. And so, this evening, I'm presenting, uh, to council tonight, uh, we are looking to award, uh, the construction contract to the low bidder, uh, for the Eleventh and Perry project, or Runnet. Here's the vicinity map of the project limits, and as you can see, it goes all the way north on Perry Avenue to East Seventeenth Street, down to Eleventh Street, then over to Pitt, and we go a little bit to the south of Eleventh on Perry as well. The scope of work, uh, includes full roadway and sidewalk reconstruction on both Eleventh and Perry Avenue. We are doing some drainage system upgrades. We're adding water quality units, one for Perry and one for Eleventh. We are adding the new sidewalk with compliant ADA ramps. We'll put some pedestrian lighting on Eleventh. We'll have some festival lighting along Eleventh, new benches, bike racks. We're going to do some, uh, 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 calm, traffic calming with some speed feedback signs and some, um, miscellaneous utility work, such as some sites who are replacements, uh, that we investigated early on in design, that, that will get replaced while we're doing the road construction projects. And so, there, there's a bike lane on Perry that will be on the east side, so going north up the hill. And then we'll have a bike lane as well on the south side, uh, of Perry, uh, sorry, of Eleventh Street. This is our funding and budget information, uh, that will look a little bit different than the last time we met during study session. Uh, and two of the note differences, uh, for council on this slide is that T I V agreed to give us another four hundred thousand dollars to address our shortfall. And we have, uh, found REIT money to make up that other difference, the nine hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. So, the total amount revised is six million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand to cover construction, our construction management costs, and then our engineering design, uh, by, by the engineer of record through construction. Our current construction schedule is, we'd like to have our bid award, obviously, be today, August third, with construction anticipated to start the week after Labor Day. And the contract working days are two hundred and ten days, which is approximately ten months of construction. And we're ready for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the, um, uh, public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to the council for a motion. Councilmember Hockler.
Thank you, Council President. I move to award the contract to Sound Pacific Construction LLC for the East Eleventh Street and Perry Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of five million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents, including sales tax, and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Councilmember Frye.
And I second.
All right. Um, we have a motion and a second, we're open for discussion, uh, Councilmember Hockler.
Well, thanks, Council President. Um, yeah, that's a, man, fantastic job on getting the T I V money, um, great to see that that came through, and that's going to take a chunk out of the, uh, uh, the extra costs that we weren't expecting. So, I was really glad to see that, and I'm glad to see the, uh, the refunds are able to be used for this. Um, you know, after the discussion last week, a study session, um, you know, I know Perry, the work is needed, but the last thing I'd want to do is to take funds away from the residential street fund, um, fix up the street in, in my district, um, because I know all the council members here can probably name several streets off the top of your head that, you know, that needs some attention to. Um, so, this seems like a great solution. And I just got to say again, who knows the Public Works on this project, I think it's going to be fantastic. Um, Potholes on Perry is a term that will forever be seared into my brain from all the door knocking in the residents in that area. So, I'm so glad to see Perry get, get fixed up. Um, and the improvements to East Eleventh, I think is going to be such a boon to local businesses and just create an even more, you know, vibrant community space for Minette and the rest of the city. And when you look at that combined with Quincy Square and Charleston and East Side, and all those getting connected, um, I think it's one of many, many great projects going on. Um, so, thanks again to, uh, to Public Works. Um, this seems like a, seems like a good solution, but I look forward to hearing, uh, more feedback. Thank you all.
Councilmember Mochler.
Thanks, President Goodnow. Okay, I'm trying to get over my envy about people who have sidewalks and are getting better sidewalks. Um, but I, I, I totally agree, and as I said last week, this Perry absolutely needs this work. And I'm, I'm happy that the design includes things that build community, like benches, festival lighting, it's not a huge part of the overall cost, but it will be a huge effect on the community as a whole. Congratulations, I'm so happy you guys got the funds from T I V and from REIT. That was really well done. I'm not going to jump into it now, but I would very much like to have a conversation soon about the two-point-two-million surplus in the residential streets. Thank you, and congratulations. May it happen.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I call for the question.
Councilmember Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Mochler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is Item Five B, Ordinance Number Five Four Five Three, Amending Chapter Six Point Three Two of the Bermanton Municipal Code, entitled Noise Levels. Our presenter tonight is Assistant City Attorney, Michael Rea. Oh, and it looks like, and Assistant City Attorney, Brett Chen.
Great. Can you read?
I am going to start with a, by sharing my screen. And once again, I'm going to highlight, um, some of the changes, or I should say, all of the changes that have been made between the last version of these ordinance that was presented to council and, uh, this proposed version. Um, this, the main one is in our Public Disturbance Noises section, um, that is, uh, under Section G, and it creates an exemption within Districts Two and Districts Three, uh, for music between hours of three PM and eleven PM, um, on Fridays and Saturdays, for a distance up to two hundred feet. Um, now, I just also wanted to note that, um, this exemption was added in, um, at the request of, some council members at previous study sessions, and then, of course, at the Public Safety Committee. Um, this is, uh, what the committee, the exemption that the committee wanted to see, uh, for music. Uh, it was not something that was done with the guidance of the administration, uh, but this is the exemption that was added in there to allow for, um, that extra bit of distance. Um, so, I'll scroll back up to the top, I just want to highlight that first, is the primary change. The, uh, next is in this preamble section where some text was added, um, to highlight the fact that the decibel readings could be used either in the future, when staff were trained to use them, or by a third-party consultant, if it became necessary to, to use the, uh, decibel readers. Uh, and that is why that section remains in the ordinance at this point. Uh, all the discussion we had at Public Safety Committee, the, um, pronouns that are included, it was really only two, two definitions, those have been changed to gender, gender-neutral pronouns. Uh, the definition of plainly audible was added, uh, that comes into play when instrument is under public disturbance noises. Uh, the intent there was to add some clarity, because I know there were some concerns by council members as to, you know, if someone had overly sensitive hearing or was hard of hearing. Uh, so this definition has been added in, uh, and is referred to in several spots within public disturbance noises. And, uh, and then again, as, um, as we've discussed, the primary enforcement method would be through public disturbance noises, uh, a new section, Six Point Three Two, oh, oh, five, oh. Um, this highlighted text here, uh, was added in to clarify that even if a, a noise may not exceed the decibel readings, it can still be a violation under public disturbance noises. And then, as you'll see in, uh, almost each of the definitions under that section, uh, as I, as I just noted, um, the definition of plainly audible is included. Um, other than the exemption period, time period within Districts, um, Two and Three, um, the distance provision for each potential violation is at one hundred feet or greater. So, if it is plainly audible from one hundred feet or greater, um, then it is a violation. Uh, other than that, there was, uh, one additional exemption added in for school marching bands. Um, it's brought to our attention through discussions that, um, that could potentially be considered a violation under the former proposed noise ordinance. Um, so, I don't think anyone wants that to be the case, uh, through a, a officially sanctioned school event. Um, so, I'm going to stop sharing the screen now and open it up for questions.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will go to the council for a motion. Vice President Chamberlain.
Thank you, President Goodnow. I move to pass Ordinance Number Five Four Five Three, Amending Chapter, Chapter Six Point Three Two of the Bermanton Municipal Code, entitled Noise Ordinances.
Uh, Councilmember Dennehy.
Uh, I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we're open for discussion. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the question.
Oh, yes, I thought I was unmuted. Councilmember Coughlin?
Yes.
Dennehy?
Yes.
Mochler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes general business.
All right. That was a surprise. Um, council reports are next. Uh, since this is the first council meeting of the month, we will start with District One. Uh, Council Vice President, Jennifer Chamberlain.
Thank you, President Goodnow. Um, I have no direct, uh, report for my district. I, I do want to do, um, a shout-out, because I noticed a really great change in District Two. There's a four-way stop that I told Councilwoman Frye about at Callahan and Schley Olympus. So, props to Public Works, um, because I've seen a lot of flybys through there. I actually got prompted for stopping there and waiting, um, because of the four-way stop, and I didn't realize it was a four-way stop. Um, so, uh, I, I really liked that change. Um, I am excited, um, that, that council members want to have a discussion about bathrooms, um, and finding a solution to that need that we have in our community. There's a need for, um, safe disposal in the nighttime of drug paraphernalia. There's a need for, uh, safe disposal, like, safe human waste disposal. I mean, it's a safety issue for every, just, uh, the folks who are having, uh, a lack of services, but also for the rest of the community. Um, but it's, it's a matter of dignity. There's other municipalities who have solutions, and we are innovative, and we do things that, like, first, you know, first-in-the-nation things. Uh, we are behind the times on this issue, and I know that we have some innovative and creative solutions that we can come up with together, uh, to solve this crisis. So, um, you know, there's a lot of things we can't do. Uh, for those who think that we have staff, we don't have staff that do this, by the way, public. We have a, a couple of members, like, hard-working staff, people that We have a a couple of members, like hard-working staff, people that do our, um, you know, like our emails and 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 agendas and things like that, but we don't have staff that can go out and solve this issue. Um, not as the city council. Um, we can create legislation, um and but we can't enforce the legislation, right? We can approve funding, but um we really need um administration, uh and it sounds like we have a really willing um administrator uh on board here to help us come up with a solution for this. Um, because it is, it's important, um it's an important issue. I, in other countries, they have public bathrooms, but here we rely on so many private services, you know, like let's, let's open it up. Let's have this discussion. Looking forward to collaborating with President Goodnow on this issue. Uh, thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Up next, uh from District Two, councilmember Denise Frye.
Yes, uh very supportive, Vice President Chamberlain. Thank you uh for your leadership in this and for President Goodnow's leadership getting together uh and uh seeing what we can come up with. I think we all would love to be a part of it, but there are obvious reasons why we can't be. Uh, so uh I'm super supportive uh of access to dignity wherever we can, wherever we can do it, and uh we have such great minds, this is a frustration, and I think to many of us, such great minds uh in in uh this country. Uh, and there, there's gotta be a solution out there for this, so. Uh, anyway, uh on to uh 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 feeling really good about uh District Two. You know, I've been trying to schedule a meeting of some kind where uh maybe I could uh uh bring the constituents of of District Two together, and I wanted to make sure that it coincided, you know, with with what staff needs, and I certainly don't want them uh to ask them to be a part of something. It would just be a pain in the uh, pain in the buttocks, is my eight-year-old grandson is saying. And we get, let him get a full uh way with that, because of course, yeah, of course. Um, but anyway, uh it looks like, uh, uh, you know, we've got this Safe Rocks to School uh project uh that's uh coming up pretty quickly in in District Two, uh which is so exciting. Uh, and then there's a a bunch of pedestrian improvements uh and so forth uh right in that area on Sylvan. So uh it looks like the planets have come into an alignment for a district meeting. Stay tuned, uh and gosh, uh councilmember Coughlin, Chamberlain, we're neighbors. If you want to join forces, we could do that, but we'll talk. Uh, I haven't even gotten together with Public Works to see when it might be uh good for them. I'm hoping like maybe fall, uh uh but maybe it has to wait until after the first of year, who knows? But I see that as positive, a positive step forward. And just to shout out to Fine House, thank you so much for the goodie-bad that I got after, yeah, uh councilmember Chamberlain got it too. Believe it or not, I've been poring through this thing, I love this stuff, I love budgets because they tell me what the goals and what the priorities are of the city. Uh, and it's just been, uh, it's been really, uh, I won't say it's been fun, uh but it's been so informative and enjoyable, how's that? And with that, that's it.
Thank you. Up next, uh District Three, councilmember Jennifer.
All right. Yeah, let me echo that, uh budget document really helps you make sense of the whole process. Couldn't resist the fun. Um, all right, district report, uh, yeah, let me echo, thanks so much to the, again, the folks who spoke up. Um, I I walk by that area almost every day, I've lived real close. Um, and uh, yeah, uh, I've just talked to a lot of people in that area about what was going on, so um, yeah, I echo some BB Chamberlain. You summed up well, Mayor, thank you. Um, let's definitely keep uh keep talking and looking for, looking for solutions. Um, before the next slide, I forgot to make a slide for the West Sound Film, uh West Sound Film Festival that's going on. Um, and so I wanted to highlight that's going on this weekend down at the Roxy. Um, it's a great event that brings a lot of people to our area, um really highlights Bermerton, so um check that out. And now on the next slide. Wanted to, um especially fellow, fellow council members, but for really anybody to highlight Green Drinks, um which is a program, if you haven't been, it's really just a collection of um community leaders and activists, business owners, um just really people who are active in the community, and it's a great way just to come out and talk, one of the uh caveats is that you're supposed to meet all these three people you never met before. Um, and it's called Green Drinks because you're supposed to bring your own cup to the event so that there's no disposable cups and keep it green. Uh, so the August eleventh one, I mean, this happens every month, but August eleventh is a turn of joy, so um definitely, I'll, I'll check that out, kind of, yeah, really great for these folks and uh getting ideas on the table. And the next slide. Also wanted to highlight that Music in the Net is still going on, uh been going every Thursday, there's at least several weeks left of it over in Manette, and uh picked this one out for Mikey the Red Scientist, who's actually kind of a children's um science educator through song, uh and so I think that was a new addition to Music in the Net to have up, because they're really family-friendly band, so I wanted to highlight that one. And then finally, uh I just wanted to mention a great community meeting, um we go into a lot of different neighborhood groups, um, you know, since starting office, and this should be at the next slide here. Um, and there's a great, great group starting up uh in kind of the Evergreen Park area. Um, so we got together and just set up a tent at the end of of the street here. Um, the highlight was this Mean Tune Cat on the right, um that a neighbor owned, uh was definitely the star of the show. Um, but it was nice, many neighbors were able to get to meet each other, and then uh one of the main issues they wanted to highlight, talk about, I'm gonna go to the next and last slide, was uh Rota Vista Park, which if you're not familiar with it, is kind of a little hidden gem of a park in the city. So when the next slide loads here, uh it's right on the waterfront, basically about the Warren Bridge, there we go. So in the, in the Google Map photo, the Warren Bridge was like buckled up to the right, so ignore that. Um, doesn't actually even that work yet, uh but it's right on the edge of the water there, and you kind of get to it at the end of Elizabeth here. And, and you know, it's nice, there's the, there's a bench down there, there's a view of the water. Um, when the tide's low, you can actually take a walking path or it's under the bridge, connect to some other areas. Um, and so the residents in that area definitely enjoy it, but they certainly, you know, had some concerns over the years with um some safety down there. Um, you know, some, some potential drug use, and so they want to use the park more, and they want to kind of have a conversation of of how that can, how that can happen and just make this area a little more usable. Um, so I wanted to relay that to uh the council and everybody. And I know that, I know that parks has done a lot of work here over the years in conjunction with local volunteers and uh um, you know, we're getting there, but I think there's some more work to go, but it'd be great to see it, uh see it as another prominent park one day. And that's it for me for my district, thanks y'all.
Thank you. Next, District Four, councilmember Quinn Dennehy.
Thank you, President Goodnow. Um, I just want to echo everybody basically on the council, um, you know, there are, I think the statistic right now is five hundred and thirty or five hundred and forty thousand people that are houseless in the United States right now. Um, you know, this is, this is a very large, complex issue um that has to do with wealth inequality, that has to do with mental health services, that has to do with um drug epidemics, um, you know, it's housing shortages, it's, it's, it's very, very complex, and um, what gives me hope in a, I guess, four or five years, or in my hope, it's kind of dwindled a little bit, is that we have community members coming here not to say we don't want to see these folks, get them off our streets, lock them up, which many municipalities used to do, I lived in New Orleans and you didn't see homeless, and that was because they were all sitting in New Orleans Parish Prison for trespass and loitering laws that are um deeply, deeply inhumane, and the Ninth Circuit finally recognized that and said, hey, this is a form of cruel and unusual punishment, these are, these are folks that are suffering from economic and mental health issues. Um, so it's just really heartening, and I just want to express my sincere appreciation that, you know, the mayor wants to address this, the council wants to address this, community members want to address this, and it's not let's incarcerate, it's how do we help these folks as much as possible? Um, I think it was towards the end of last year, I I was uh fortunate enough to get a tour of the Salvation Army uh by Captain Dana, I believe her name was, okay. Uh, Mary, Mary on the board, and it it was, it was just also really um really profound to to go and see the showers, to see like the very large kitchen, the um, you know, the rooms of winter coats and sleeping bags and 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 the fact that um so many community resources have been poured in, but also the partnership that that we've, you know, helped form with with security and mental health services. So um I know it's very frustrating, and and I think that a lot of people just, including myself, are are paralyzed with what we've seen go happen in this country uh to to cause so many of our fellow citizens to be houseless. Um, but I'm just really encouraged that we all want to do something, and that's not just sweep the problem away and and continue the systemic injustices, so I just want to say that. Um, I also want to give, um, switching to the subject, uh District Four recently has been um kind of uh, you know, a flutter with parking complaints, I've been getting a lot of parking complaints of um you know, Hulk vehicles and junk vehicles, um, you know, we're, we're right next to the shipyard, and a lot of folks um take parking spots here. Um, a- and then it's even more frustrating when, when, you know, there's certain vehicles that have not been removed or not taken, or there's things like that. And I just want to thank uh the mayor, uh Melinda Monroe, Sarah Leggett, um, you know, Legal um for, you know, responding to some constituents that I know have made some complaints and looks to me for for certain answers, and and obviously my job's not to enforce, so inform the administration and um, yeah, I I I I think everybody's been really impressed with how quickly things have been addressed as far as code enforcement and parking enforcement, and and I think uh it'll be nice to just continue that, that um, that trend, because parking is at a prime and and we can't just have um abandoned vehicles on on the streets of the district, so thank you to the administration for that and uh all the folks that have helped on that, and that's everything, thanks a lot, folks.
Right, thank you. Uh, up next, District Six, councilmember Onwomor.
Thanks, Mr. President. Okay, um, I have two slides, and thanks to all of you for supporting the basic dignity and respect. Um, okay, so here's my slide, this is District Six. So, second, next slide, please, thank you. Um, is there a way to zoom in on this so that everyone can read it? Anyhow, while we're waiting, because either A, there, there we go. Um, so last week, uh it was stated that, you know, we have established our goals and priorities, and that's quite true. Um, I'm just gonna go with the Merriam-Webster definition of a goal, which is the end toward which effort is directed. So a lot of our goals um have no one responsible for them. They're not on anyone else's agenda, they're not on a staff agenda. Um, so here, what I've done is my, you know, you all know I've only been on here since the end of February, but it's just some possible assignments of these goals so that work could be done on them. You all remember that at the beginning of the joint planning session, we had a a huge list of um goals that had been handed down for years and years and years. So I was thinking perhaps we could work on some of these and, you know, start afresh uh in twenty twenty-three. So, um, shoot, I've got about four minutes left, President Goodnow?
A three and a half.
All righty then, I'm setting up for three, forgot to set the timer. So here what I've done is anything that was continued support for, I just graded out because, I mean, we're, someone is doing it. But for example, there's no, I can't think of where you would encourage the purchase of local goods and services. Um, like that would be something that a sustainability committee might address. Um, Public Works, Public Safety, supporting improvements for pedestrian safety, including parks and schools. As you can see, I've just chosen my top three to five issues, and I was thinking if I emailed this to you, to all of you, and you chose your top five, that we could do something like rank choice voting and begin working on them, perhaps with a one-hour-long study session after the general meeting is over. Um, okay, hang on, if you could scroll down, please? So, under affordable housing, um lots of different places where this might be done, um audit committee, an ad hoc committee, which it seems like we're in the process of forming, to exploring the feasibility of implementing findings of the March twenty twenty Affordable Housing Recommendations Report. Again, if there were a sustainability committee, it would definitely help develop policies that encourage environmental stewardship. Um, something that I as far know is, did no department even has a person responsible for communications under outreach, access, and transparency in government. But developing policies and implementing changes that encourage not just the public to be able to reach the city and us, but also for us and the city to be able to reach back out to people. Um, a less impenetrable webpage might be a a possible way to go. Um, and and then finally, I've got fifty-three seconds left, yes. Um, equity in government, just really start working on this, we have two staff members, we can start working with that. We can start considering um BIPOC interns for our staff. If we can't, you know, influence the larger thing, we can do a small thing. So that was really it, I thought that if it would be difficult to achieve goals, one, it isn't anybody's responsibility, it's what Garrett Harden calls the tragedy of the commons. It's something everybody wants to happen, but since there's no one in charge of making it, so there's, yeah, it it simply doesn't happen. So I guess really my question in my twenty seconds that I have left is, is this something that interests anyone but me?
So, um, what I'll say is that this is something we we normally have, and it's normally something that uh you know, staff will do, and then if there's some question, so I'll have um, I'll have staff take a look at what they would have, they may have already done it, I'll have staff look at what they've assigned. And there's, so, every year we take e- each goal and assign it to a committee or, you know, or to the entire body. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at what we were at and hear input, so.
Thanks, Mr. President.
And then, yeah, and then, you know, we can, we can all have some input on it, so thanks for bringing that up.
All right, thank you for that. Um, up next, District Seven, councilmember Eric Younger.
Thank you, so I was just listening to our other council member reports, and I just wanted to build on a couple of council members' comments. One is uh councilmember Frye, that's an excellent idea to combine district meetings, we used to do that in years past, especially if you do not have a specific item in mind, like the Alton District Seven. You get kids out, like clean up, well, then in that instance, you're gonna get a huge turnout, and last time we did that, we had like a hundred and fifty people, so I understand uh using the the various street services administration, but um out of respect for the staff, and I think that's the direction you were going, it's often helpful to combine district meetings with an adjacent district. Uh, to best utilize scarce administration resources, so I applaud you for suggesting that. And it's something we used to do in the past, I used to do it with Carol Herons all the time in our district meetings, so. Something to think about, councilmembers. And then the other thing is, councilmember Mochler, I agree with you, and I agree with President Goodnow about having um someone responsible for that, and I think President Goodnow has addressed what we used to do in the past, and that was uh for each goal, we'd assign a committee, and then council president at the time, I used to, uh on a quarterly basis, during study sessions, say, where are we at on this? And so I think that might be a good best practice. In any case, it's more of a study session, I, so. Anyway, those are my comments for tonight, everyone have a great evening.
Uh, thank you. Um, we have, and, you know, back pre-COVID, uh we would have our council goals on the wall of the um, of the council uh conference room, so. Um, yeah, I just want to kind of reiterate the, you know, the conversations uh about um you know, treating people without housing, you know, humanely, and um, yeah, you know, we've we've recognized some things, and you know, there wasn't solutions attached, so we need to, we need to really think outside of the box and figure out ways to make uh some of this happen. So we need to, we need to really think outside of the box and figure out ways to make uh some of this happen. Um you know, there may be some creative uh things we can come up with. You know, unfortunately, we we kind of know what the problems are and we know what what hasn't worked. And we just need to get uh creative there. Um hey, I want to thank everybody who participated in the primary. All right, it's super important to be engaged on local politics. Uh but you know, for us, it's it's who we who we're working with in Olympia, who's gonna be supporting us uh as a city. So I appreciate everybody's um uh participation, who participated. And if you didn't, it's not too late. You can register to vote. Uh go to the state's website and find out all the information you need there. Uh Councilmember Hoffman, I mentioned the uh West Sound Film Festival, which is housed on Roxy, but also uh used as a screen at um Seafilm. Partners with the Seafilm down the street too, so. And um the festival partners with um folks um uh, you know, up and down the street. It really engages with um Dog Days and Axon Arrow and, you know, different, different places that are downtown. And I believe they're expecting um a hundred and fifty filmmakers. Um and uh so it's a pretty, it's 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 pretty cool. So um I've West Sound Film Fest, uh something, you guys can find it. Everybody's pretty smart here. Um speaking of uh Councilmember Hoffman, happy birthday, Jeff. I believe your birthday is tomorrow, unless that is your um false information.
That is accurate. I'm turning twenty-two finally, so you know, it's uh what we want.
Um I also wanted to um mention a couple of weeks ago, we had the Pride event. It's the first time we ever had to uh issue a quorum uh for a Pride event in Kitsap County. So or, you know, so twenty-six years in the making, uh we had a quorum. It was great to see uh Mayor Wheeler was there uh and some of my fellow council members. We, however, were all running around so much that we, there was no uh, no worries of any, any potential uh discussions happening. Uh but it was, it was a great day and uh it was, had a great turnout. And uh anyways, uh I apologize, uh just kind of rushed now. All right. Let's see, up next we have an executive session. So council members, it'll be a good time to find your link. So I will be last. Um but council members will be in an executive session for thirty minutes uh to discuss pending litigation and potential litigation as allowed under RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten. One I, action is anticipated. So we will be back in approximately, we'll be back in thirty minutes if we don't extend. Thank you.
All right. Well, they are in session now for the next thirty minutes. It'd be interesting to see uh what that litigation
Reporting stopped.
Is about. So go ahead and use the restroom, get something to eat. Uh you know, what I want to say, uh we'll talk more about this in our Civic Second on Sunday uh with Jeff. But this is what power looks like. It's not given, it's taken. You have to get involved. You know, when I spoke two weeks ago, there was one other person that spoke. Um they didn't even respond to my comments. But today, four people spoke. They all ended up addressing it. And now it looks like they're willing to maybe do a roundtable discussion, come and meet with us that have concerns, look at the issues. So we must continue to drive the issue. We must. Two weeks from now should be double, eight people speaking. And the week after, two weeks after that, another eight people or twelve people or sixteen people speaking until we resolve these issues. And once that issue is adequately resolved, uh we keep an eye on it. And then we move on to the next issue. We have a tremendous amount of power, folks. We just have to exercise that power. We elected them. That means that they work for us. We are their constituents. And so they are going to do what they think is important. And as you've heard, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, the tall blade of grass gets cut. Because that one sounds kind of negative, right? But there is power in numbers, right? So if you come by yourself, not too much can happen. Some of the things that concern me, uh like I said, I don't want to go too much into it and wait for Sunday. Uh but the mayor seemed awfully uh down on those experiencing homelessness. Really just kind of criminalized them, you know, oh, there's drugs happening in the bathroom, and people locking themselves in the bathroom and this and that. You know, everyone that is homeless didn't start off with a drug or alcohol issue. Every single person that uh is homeless didn't start off with the mental health issues. However, as you are experiencing homelessness over a longer and longer duration, you can and likely will develop mental health issues, alcoholism, drug addiction, physical health issues. And so it's almost like telling folks to pull themselves up from their bootstraps. Hey, I've been out here, I'm waiting. If you watched the housing program earlier, right, folks have their Section A vouchers, it may be years before their name gets called. Some folks down there may have actual vouchers. They're waiting on their name to be called. But it can take years. And as Joe was saying, you need to try to work on your situation in the interim. There could be any one of us. A loss of a job, an accident. No support, no friends or family that can take us in, that will take us in. They may be teetering on the brink. And then you're there. I don't know how I would cope and survive should I find myself on the street with my physical limitations and everything else is going on. So it's all of our problem. It's for all of us to work and solve. We know more and more people are going to lose stable housing due to this housing market. And this is gonna take a while to change and reverse these private equity funds, purchasing properties, raising rents, and doing all these things that put American citizens at risk. As long as we are worshiping the dollar, folks are gonna suffer. Anyhow, take a break. You'll see the timer there. Come back in. I don't want to miss this since they are saying there will be resolution. Uh that is definitely important. Thank you all for tuning in and a special, special shout out to Joe and Jeff and Jordan for speaking up today. How powerful was that? Now we just gotta keep following through. And if that dumpster is gone downtown, what a travesty. I hope that this is something temporary, but I don't know why they would take the trash, take the dumpster and not just empty it, but literally take it off-site. So uh we need to get down to the bottom of that. Uh I also don't understand how they're saying that it is patrolled twice a day, Monday through Friday, when we filled an entire pickup truck on a Saturday morning. Oh, just saying. All right, y'all. Let me uh, I digress. Let me fall back. See you in twenty-three minutes.
I should unmute. Can we get this restarted, IT?
Recording in progress.
So the motion would be moved to authorize the city attorney to initiate and pursue any necessary litigation and take any other necessary actions to evade any non-neustance and pillage violations on properties located at 1138 North Calo Avenue, 426 South Lafayette Avenue, 827 Sixth Street, 1569 Thompson Drive, 3811 Ninth Street, and 2120 2116 and 2010 East Finney Bay Drive in Bremington, Washington.
All right, Councilmember Denny.
Subway. Second.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Coughlin. We have a motion second. I call for the question.
Councilmember Denny?
Yes.
Moffler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Respectfully abstained.
Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yeah.
Good now.
Yes.
Motion carries six yeses, one abstention.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Our meetings will continue to be held remotely, the next study session on Wednesday, August 10th at 5:00 PM. This concludes tonight's regular council meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Take care all.
Good night, everybody.
All right, their timer's up. So, let's see if they are coming back on. Oh, man. Joe says, cheers to us. So I figured I had enough time. It's like, I'm gonna run the Safeway really quick. That was crazy. I can't believe I made it back. Cheers to all of us for organizing. Oh, they came and went. What did they say, Joe? Cheers to all of us for organizing together for the impact. Writing to Kirsten now for feedback about the previous KHAC working group. We should be picking up where they left off. Also, the group that Akuyet convened that stopped because of the pandemic got get clear on who or where they left off. No need to spend time reviewing the problems and obstacles that came and went. So I think it will be definitely helpful to meet with the mayor and do a roundtable that is broadcast so everybody is a part of this and agree to make sure that folks that are in that quarter that are experiencing homelessness are part of that conversation and it's not just leaders from Salvation Army and City Council and you know, and other leaders and nonprofit folks and community members. Their voices need to be heard for sure. So I look forward to that. You saw the email that I sent during the mayor speaking. And so we will wait for a response on that and share that out. I will also ask the mayor if we can do a Zoom and broadcast that. And then lastly, I'd also like to not only do the roundtable discussion, but have them create a quorum, right? So they were just mentioning this quorum that was created for Pride Month. And this is the first one in however many years as they were mentioning that. Then they need to quorum for this. This is important, right? And it's gonna take all of them pulling together and being a voice and coming up with solutions to come up with the with the solutions and and what we're going to try. And know that we may not succeed the first time. And know that we may not succeed the first time. So that means we'll try something. If it doesn't work, we're gonna try something else. But we're not gonna criminalize folks that are downtown. Or, paint with the broad brush, like they do with the police, right? It's a few bad apples or, or, you know, spoiling it for all the, all the good police officers. Well, that's the same for folks in the homeless community. There's a few bad apples that are spoiling it for everyone. So, those you work with, but you don't paint with the broad brush. Cause if you go down and you meet and you speak with those folks, that is a very small population of that population. All right. I'll get off my soapbox. I really can't, though. My chair is so high now. It's almost as high as when I stand up. It's so funny. Oh, man. Anyway, agreed for their legal team to take some sort of action to various properties. Noted for noise, I think. Yeah, yeah. All right, guys. You have taken your power for today. Let's keep up this momentum. Let me give you the horn. What a difference two weeks make, you know? I'm just super excited. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jordan, for all of you making your voices heard. As I said, I hope to see you, more of you, uh, bring your voices to bear. And we just keep pushing and we keep pushing and we keep pushing and we keep advocating. I would love, 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 love if there were folks in the community that were advocating, uh, for me, uh, when I was in a, a, a time of need. So we can do that now. Uh, and hopefully, start to change this direction here. As Jennifer Chamberlain, uh, was it Jennifer Chamberlain, was saying we've done, uh, some firsts in the nation, uh, but we're behind on this. Well, let's, you know, turn the ship around and become the first again on solving this issue, right, for our people. All right, guys. I'm R. Juan Cameron. This is The Conduit. Man, we'll see you next time. I might do a late night one tonight. So, if you have insomnia,